Nine o'clock.
Good morning. It's nine o'clock. Welcome to Delaware County Council meeting for July, July 27, 2021. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if everybody would please stand and remove your hats for the Pledge of Allegiance. Steve, you want to start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Steve, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes, here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Denise, was the agenda advertised and posted?
Yes.
All right. Now, I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Okay, just a reminder, questions from the public can be directed to county council, dist@co.delaware.in.us. Also, you can contact your councilman anytime throughout the month. Email addresses are on the website. We will also have a public comment at the end, three-minute limit, and if you're already commenting about what somebody has already commented about, just please not to be redundant on those comments, so. And I need an approval of the June minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Lassiter, second from Piper. Any changes, corrections, discussion on that from council? If not, roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Let's see, we have no resolutions. We do have an ordinance for second reading, ordinance authorizing Delaware County, Indiana, to issue its economic development revenue bonds series and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto, ordinance number 2021-016. This is the second reading for Canpac. So do we have a representative to... Tracy, are you okay?
Sure. Good morning, council. Tracy Lutton, Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance. As you mentioned, this is the second reading of the ordinance for the Canpac project. We've had no questions about the project. I think we've checked in with all of you in advance, Mr. Walters did. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but we just appreciate your support of this so we can continue with the bond. We also have a couple representatives from the company and also their bond counsel here today.
Okay. Let me go ahead and get a motion and a second on this, and then if anybody from the company or the group would like to say anything, you're more than welcome to do that. But what we need is a motion for an amended...
First, you ought to entertain a motion to adopt.
Okay.
And with a second, and then we'll amend it.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to adopt from Piper, second from Ballard.
Number in the record.
Yeah, that's 20. I think I already did, but I'll do it again.
2021-016.
016, yeah.
Should be in the motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Now, we need to...
I mean, a motion to amend it. I apologize to the council. We just received the final version of the ordinance yesterday afternoon, and it was sent out to you marked with the changes. The changes are, for the most part, not substantive, with one exception, and I did talk to the bond counsel yesterday, and when the ordinance was introduced, it included in there the possibility that the bonds might be taxable bonds. And that was just a... they weren't sure which way it was going to go, and that was to provide them flexibility. Her comment was that this juncture, we're further along in negotiations and know that the bonds can be issued on a tax-exempt basis, and that was the reason for the change in the final wording. So the request is that you amend the ordinance as introduced to the new language as was distributed to you yesterday.
I'll move to amend with the new language as presented.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb.
I don't have a copy of the amendment. Is the amendment on page four? Amendments are throughout. They're marked there. Okay. Oh, I got it. And what was sent out yesterday, you'll see a line on the side of the page that indicates where the amendments are, changes.
Anybody from your group have anything they want to say, or?
So my name's Dusty Jordan. I'm the plant manager of the Canpac facility, and I just want to thank everyone for your support in this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Now, we need a vote on the amended.
To adopt as amended.
To adopt as amended. And we've... do we need a motion for that bill, or?
Right, it's on the floor.
That's what I thought. Okay. Roll call, please, on the amended second reading.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you, guys. Yep. All right, let's move on to trades for and finance.
Commissioners, that request has been withdrawn. EMS, 130 paramedic, B-130 paramedic minus 35,001 0552, C-130 paramedic plus 35,001 0552, A-122 advanced EMT minus 16,379 55, B-122 advanced EMT plus 16,379 55, C-177 advanced EMT minus 16,379 55, D-177 advanced EMT plus 16,379 55. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Title 4D Court, 175 insurance minus 2,002 26 uniforms plus 2,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from... what's that?
Lassiter.
Lassiter? Okay. Any questions from council?
I do need to... I can reduce that to $1,000. We had talked at finance.
Yep.
So the robe is going to be about 227, 230, and then I found out the cost for everything. It's going to cost about 800 for four pairs of pants and two... six shirts, six different types of shirts. And so we want to leave enough money in there to do embroidery because we have to have the star embroidered on a couple of the shirts. So it's about $800, but we want to leave a couple hundred in there for embroidery. So can we reduce it to 1,000? And then that should cover everything.
What kind of pants are these?
They're the uniform pants that they, like, the deputies wear, because he is an actual deputy. He's not like the court bailiff that you have in the courts where they're the bailiffs for the jury. He's an actual bailiff. So he has to buy the actual uniform, and he hasn't had any for a couple years. And then the other shirts, they're the deputy shirts, and he's also getting some polo shirts and some short-sleeve and long-sleeve shirts. So it's actual deputy uniforms.
It's only four pairs of pants, though.
Right.
At $800.
No, it's a juror's robe. Our juror... not juror. It's our judge's robe. His robe has gotten too big, so Master Commissioner Tim Hollums' robe, which is $227. It's four pairs of pants at $60 each.
There we go.
Two shirts at $60 each, two polo shirts at $40 each, two short-sleeve shirts at $25 each, and two long-sleeve shirts at $32.50 each.
I heard it wrong.
$80, or $800. And we want enough in there for embroidery, because I have to embroider all that.
So I move to reduce to $1,000 for uniform 226.
Got a motion from Quakenbush.
Second.
Second from Piper to reduce that to 1,000. We need to vote on that reduction. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Now, we need to vote. We need a motion to approve.
We had the original.
On that.
On the floor, right?
The original is two. We changed it to one.
You just need to vote to as amended again.
Yeah.
So I'll move to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jail, F-111 correctional officer minus 21,510, G-111 correctional officer plus 21,510, A-147 correctional officer minus 19,640 69, B-147 correctional officer plus 19,640 69. The next one should say E-134 correctional officer minus 23,953. The next one should say F-134 plus 23,953. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Any discussion, questions from council?
I have a question.
Yep.
Did you give us an update on where we're at with the new hires in the pipeline? Have we lost any more since the last meeting and new hires coming in?
Yes, we have. I will be presenting you with five more for August's agenda. There are still others that are talking. I'm sorry, Nancy Marvin, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. We have a couple more then on September's agenda that we will be putting in. I also have deputies that I'm putting in for August, and there'll be one in September. They have been doing very well at as soon as they get an application, the correctional officers are bringing them in, they are interviewing, they are testing, they are doing everything they can. If we could get a drug screen back in the same day, they would be hired the same day if they pass all the testing. So she hired six. If I remember right, Angel.
The last month, you said that they could actually fill out an application at the jail. I know there's not a lot of places to do that.
Correct.
Do we have any type of way to do a digital application? Like, are we on Indeed or other things like that as well?
I know that we have put it out over on Facebook, I know. I'm not sure what Kyle has been able to put out for us to try and get the applications out for more people.
Nancy, what is the typical turnaround for the drug tests?
24 to 36 hours. We had 15 openings at the last meeting. She filled with six. I'm bringing you five new openings, and there'll be more in September.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Loewett Jail, B-111 correctional officer minus 16,585 02, C-111 correctional officer plus 16,585 02. The next two lines have been withdrawn. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Webb, second from... or Mary, excuse me.
That was Webb and then Mary.
Webb and then Mary? All right. Motion from Webb, second from Mary. Any questions from council, discussion? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
CASA Donation Fund, 104 Family Court Recovery Case Manager minus 9,492 71, A-104 Family Recovery Court Case Manager plus 9,492 71. Total request zero.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion from Quakenbush, second from Piper. Is that right?
Yep.
All right. Any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Boca Grant, 101 minus 11,166 66, A-101 plus 11,166 66, 104 minus 5,795 71, A-104 plus 5,795 71. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from council? We want to just discuss real quick, just for the public, what... yep.
So both of these, what we're transferring is because I had an employee transfer from my office to the juvenile court office, so I needed to open her pay line up to be filled by actually somebody who's already in my office, who's going to be moving into that role. And then I have to open that person's pay line up for a new hire, to which I've already identified. I'm getting somebody back that I lost her employment during COVID. She's able to rehire this time, so we're so excited. So these are both grant... these are all grant funds that are matched with Boca.
Can you state your name and your department?
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm Ashley Soldat, and I'm the CASA Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Transfer addendum, EMS, E-109 minus 13,819 55, F-109 plus 13,819 55. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
911 Communications, A-130 minus 21,412 33, B-130 plus 21,412 33, B-115 minus 20,134 15, C-115 plus 20,134 15, E-123 minus 22,173, F-123 plus 22,173. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council?
Yes, nobody else has a question. I'd like to ask Director Singleton, the same question I asked earlier with the jail. I know you're kind of in the same situation. Could you give us an update on your situation as far as employees?
All right. Paul Singleton, Director of 911. If these three get approved, that'll leave me with two full-time openings to bring before council in August. So I've got several in training, so that still makes me short on the floor.
How many are in training now?
Five, I believe.
Didn't we lose one?
Yes, recently.
Four, right, in training right now.
Let me see, there's a...
I could be wrong. For some reason...
Part-time, yeah. There's a... they're all scattered on the... one's in classroom phase, and there's three on the floor. And then, yes, we lost one. She was asked to leave.
And then currently on the floor, we are short how many?
Um...
Done, released, ready to go to fill those positions.
Well, short those four plus the other five that we haven't hired. So we're still short nine spots that are released and able to work on their own.
If I could ask you a similar question as earlier, could you explain for the public what the hiring practices are for the 911 dispatch as far as how to apply?
Okay, you can either apply at HR. We also put openings notices out on Facebook. We send them to... I believe Pam's still sending them to Ivy Tech. So you can either do it in HR. Everything eventually goes to HR. We have copies, paper copies, if they want to stop by and get one for us. Once we get the application, we look it over, and then we have a pre-test that they have to take. It's a typing test. It's multitasking. Can they transcribe what they hear and put it into keyboard? Then, once they do that, we ask that they observe so they know what they're getting themselves into. We'll do a background check. We'll check references, scour social media, whatever, and then we'll bring them in for an interview with HR present. Once the interview's complete, we'll either offer them a conditional offer of employment based on their drug screen or not.
Like, how difficult would it be to get us set up for, like, Indeed? I mean, I don't hire anyone, but I know when I was looking for a job, I went to Indeed.
We do advertise on Indeed as well. I don't know that we've got anybody that's actually worked on Indeed. For a while, we were getting a lot of applications just for people that were trying to fulfill their requirement of looking. But yes, we do advertise on Indeed as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Have you heard anything about your money? I'm concerned because I'm showing it...
They said it was done, and we should be getting it. I'll make that phone call today again. It was approved a couple months ago, I thought. So I'll make that call to the state and find out where it's at.
Because I increased county general's anticipated revenue, and I'm getting a little concerned, because it's supposed to be a quick turnaround.
Right, right. And I'm going to need that money back in my state account, too, because I drew that account down to help with that payment. So I'll make that phone call when I get back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for the financial agenda.
Go ahead.
Okay, hang on. Okay, Commissioners, 198 part-time, $60,000, 386 institutional care, $150,000, 392 cares reimbursement, $215,000 555. Total request, $425,555.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
Yep.
Any questions from council?
Can you... go ahead, go ahead.
I was just curious, have you transferred any out of institutional into other accounts this year?
I can let you know that in one second. Hold on. I have not run.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
How much part-time did you go through before you've asked for the $60,000?
So I think right now we're averaging around $7,000 a month. If it's not out right now, it will run out over the next pay. We were at $110,000 in that account, and the year before last, it got cut to 95. We pay 11 part-timers with $95,000, so it's very little.
Is there any way we can cut that down to 30, and then you come back to us if you need more?
We could try that.
To kind of see, especially with...
Just to give it a couple months, just to see where we're at. I'm open to that.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question. The cares reimbursement?
Mm-hmm.
Is that... could you explain a little bit about what that's worth?
Yeah, absolutely. So that is... let me just show you my handy-dandy folder. This is every cares claim for every single department, COVID-related purchases. It's completely broken down by department and broken down by what portion we received the $96,000 back from the state before they stopped with, we'll just call them the frivolous reimbursement requests, before they just said, "We're going to do the lump sum." I do have some printouts for you guys, so I'm happy to email all that to you guys. Just keep it easier instead of just handing out a bunch of papers, so that you can see it's not an arbitrary figure. It's down to the penny of given claims.
That reimbursement, is that the latest one, from the 22 million, or the first one that they had done?
This is solely from the cares money. Yeah, to my understanding, I don't think the ARP monies can be used for anything prior to March 2 of this year, and all this is for COVID-related.
Okay.
Right, and these are all expenses that were incurred last year during COVID, and it's just reimbursing. They were all paid because they had to be paid. I mean, all that stuff had to be purchased, and...
The only thing that would be past that March 2 date of this year is going to be the Safe and Sanitized Bills, and that is the largest we've spent, $136,000 to them alone. And that's the company that was going through all the offices and buildings, cleaning and sanitizing, I think, weekly for most offices.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I...
Are they still...
The reason I was under pressure was I have a different council. Thank you.
Are they still doing that?
No, I think we stopped last month, I want to say.
And for those tuning in or whatever, the cares money we received at the end of last year, and that is different than the American Rescue Plan money that we received this year.
And we did get some of that money back from council and the auditor's office already in December, so this is outside of that. Yep.
And that was automatically deposited in the general fund, correct?
I believe so. Donna can probably answer that.
Just taking it out of the general fund and putting it back where you used it in an emergency basis.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Any more questions from council?
The only thing I would say is, is I think when it comes to this part-time, and I don't know how to do this, but we've got to be, I think, a little bit more diligent in what we're spending on that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because I don't want the well to run dry by any means, but it's very possible.
Yeah, that account runs short every year, it's nothing new. And now, and like I said, fifteen thousand was cut from it two years ago, so now it really won't run short.
And plus, you've got to remember that they raised their hourly rate.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We did, but we also reduced, what, six people from full-time to part-time when we had the...
Now, you give them a raise this year.
Yeah, I know that, but that was, that was people that used to be on full-time.
Oh, and maintenance?
The maintenance people in the building when we, when we did some reductions after the circuit breaker, we cut all those people back to part-time, except one or two.
That was probably eight or nine years ago when that happened.
I was going to say, that's been a while.
Well, it's been a while, but it's still...
Yeah, he never recuperated those full-times.
Yeah, none of them.
But my point is, she's got the same amount of people and you give them a raise, so she's going to run out.
Well, yeah, and we do need to recognize that because we agreed with that.
Yep.
I had to bring them up to minimum wage for part-time. We changed all part-time.
Any other questions from council on that? Ryan, are you wanting to reduce that?
I'd like to reduce it to at least thirty.
I'll second that.
Is that a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Okay. I got a motion from Ballard, second from Piper. We would reduce that to amend that to be thirty thousand instead of sixty thousand? Any questions on that?
So we're going to approve three ninety-five, five fifty-five.
Yes.
It was pretty easy.
Roll call on the amended amount.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I need an approval of the amended...
Part-time.
And it's on...
Yes.
Yeah, of the amended amendment, amended change.
Second.
Yeah, for that one. Got a motion from Ballard?
Yep.
Second from Piper. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Coroner three eleven, autopsy labs and x-rays, eighty thousand. Total request, eighty thousand.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from council?
What's the cost of an autopsy for the coroner?
Twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred?
That's just the autopsy, toxicology's two fifty-six.
And how much did you go through out of that line item last year? Obviously, all of it, but what was in that line item?
Hundred and ninety thousand.
Hundred and ninety thousand is what you went through already?
For last year. This year, I had a hundred and seventy and I've got twelve thousand left.
Wow.
We discussed this pretty extensively at Finance Committee. It's just unfortunate.
I've had seven more.
She's even had the numbers for us.
Yeah, I have seven more since Thursday. One homicide and six pending.
So I know, oh, go ahead.
No, you...
I know I bring this up like every year, but when my dad passed, he was home alone and hadn't been to a physician in over seven years, so autopsy was required for him. What other instances require an autopsy to occur?
We have, we, five. We have suicides, overdoses, car fatalities, homicide, did I say homicide? And then unknown, so which turn out to sometimes be natural cardiac, things like that, that the doctors won't sign off. They haven't seen a doctor in several years. Those become our cases. We also get a lot of nursing home cases. So if there's a fall within one year, those become our cases. Not just at a nursing home, but if there's a fall anywhere, we take those from the doctor.
So a lot of autopsies.
Yeah, you said children, too, right? Did you say children?
All children. All children under, supposed to be, I think, twelve or, it's really anybody under seventy is what we're supposed to autopsy, but Rick weeds a lot of those out. So we mainly limit it to the five: overdoses, suicides, homicides, car fatalities, and unknown.
Well, and in finance, you kind of broke down some of the numbers for us in there. And the autopsies themselves are twelve hundred, sometimes less if you have, if you can get a partial, but...
Yes, some of the suicides we can get away with for six hundred. If we just do external, if it's an obvious suicide, a gunshot wound, something like that, we do an external for six hundred.
But that twelve hundred is sometimes just the beginning, you've got to add on.
X-rays, children all have twenty-six x-rays that we have to take. Those x-rays vary. Again, sometimes suicides, if it's a gunshot, we have to take an x-ray to see if the projectile is out or the bullet. So it just depends.
Let me ask you this, if, can we cut that to forty, forty thousand? And you guys still be okay? And when you need more, if you need more, you can come back to us?
I have twelve thousand left. I have seventeen thousand from Thursday, so that'd be five thousand in the hole. And I had seven since Thursday, so another seven thousand. So I'm about thirteen thousand already in the hole. Along with the twelve that I've got. So I've got about twenty-five thousand that's due right now.
And we added this number in at the finance meeting. It wasn't even listed. We penciled it in and told her to go ahead and come and ask for it so she'd have money without going in the red. So I think we better stay with that eighty thousand.
It was on there, it just wasn't on the original one that we got sent out.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, the updated version had it on there.
Right, but at Finance, we didn't.
Yeah, we just didn't have it on our sheets.
And I know at one time, you were pretty, I don't know what the exact word is, but you were personally a little reluctant to stay with this job. But I really want to thank you for the information and the due diligence that you've done to come for us back up the coroner while he's pretty busy. Thank you.
Thank you.
This isn't the first time. I mean, historically speaking, there's been multiple years that you've had to come before us and ask for additional funds and it's, we have to do autopsies, there's no way around it, so...
Well, I think we kind of discussed it Thursday, I don't think you were there. Twenty-seventeen, we had just a hundred and ninety-seven autopsies. Twenty-eighteen, we did one sixty-nine. Twenty-nineteen, when Rick took over, we had two hundred and thirty-two autopsy cases. Last year, we had two hundred and fifty-seven autopsies and we are now at, let's see, we were at one fifty-three at the meeting and I've had seven, so we're about at one sixty already for the year.
Did you include in this eighty thousand a new printer? Are you still working on that typewriter?
I like my typewriter.
You didn't...
I don't want to get too greedy.
Right.
You're not looking, or are you, what do you want to do here? We've got eighty thousand on table, we'd need an amendment to change that.
That's fine.
Okay, all right.
I mean, we're just going to keep compounding it.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter? Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
EMA two eleven, COVID-nineteen EMA supplies, ten thousand, two ninety-three fifty. Total request, ten thousand, two ninety-three fifty.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Do you want to explain this just a little bit?
Sure.
John Catino, Director of Merch Management. This is grant funds that we started receiving at the very beginning of the pandemic from Ball Brothers and whatnot. I think First Merch has threw a little bit in there as well. So we're just re-appropriating this money for PPE supplies. It was a line item that Jason had established back then and I just got to get it re-appropriated so we can continue buying PPE for our stockpile that we have.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
But it's right. Oh, I'm sorry. Jail, one ninety-seven overtime, one hundred thousand. Two twenty-four inmate meal, thirty thousand. Two twenty-six uniforms, five thousand. Three ninety-three, that should say schooling, four thousand. Total request, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb?
Yep.
All right. Any questions from council? This is kind of what we talked about last month, I think, and we said that we would see this this month. This is reimbursing some funds that we had used money from last month to get them through last month to get here.
Yeah, the inmate meals, right.
That was the main one, yes.
Yeah, supplies and, or, yeah, inmate meals, uniforms, that was, that's reimbursing those accounts for what we took out last month.
And just so for the public, this is an additional overtime outside of what was budgeted for the year that's already been spent, correct?
Correct. I moved the money from the inmate meals, uniforms, and schoolings accounts just to get us through the month of July. On top of that, the sheriff has put deputies from the road into the jail on the shifts to even alleviate the amount of overtime we have had up to this point. But what I moved is going to be gone at the end of July, so if we don't get this additional, I don't know where we're going to pay them.
So what's the projected expectation of how long this will last if you get this?
I put this in to get us through the end of the year. If we continue to lose it at the rate we are, I hope I don't have to come back and ask you for more, but I can't guarantee you that.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter? Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Family Recovery Court, one oh-one program coordinator, six hundred and eleven dollars and fifteen cents. FICA, forty-seven dollars per seventy dollars. Total request, seven twenty-eight fifteen.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from council?
You want me to explain?
Go ahead.
Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. So when I took that Family Recovery Court Coordinator, she did half and half, half out of court reporter, half out of FRC. She had seven days vacation I needed to pay out. And I appropriated enough out of her court reporter account, but I forgot FRC. So I'm just appropriating her seven days vacation, which does pay her out, and then she's off to Ohio. And then the other money's already been appropriated for our new employee. So this is just to pay her out to end her employment with us, pretty much.
And this is coming out of the grant fund?
Yes, this is grant. We have the money, just need to appropriate it.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. All right, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-one-five.
Second.
Okay, motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
All right. Just FYI, we do have a, an appointment up for the Yorktown Library Board, no?
Muncie Animal Shelter.
Muncie Animal Shelter, all right, I knew it. Muncie Animal Shelter. I don't think we've got somebody to fill that right now. This was a resignation that we got this month on there, so we're, we'll be seeking a person there. Denise, do you know if that's, is that a balance board?
I don't know at all.
I know our past two appointments have been Democrat appointees.
Okay.
I can let you know.
Okay. Yeah, if you could let us know on that and then we will try and get that resolved for next month. On that, Department Heads and elected officials, any...
Morning, Council. Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. Somewhere in front of you, I passed out this morning a small packet of information. It's paper clipped. So this is the same information I bring to you every July and January. The first page is meal costs for the jail. So for roughly the first six months of the year, our meal cost is actually down a little bit from last year. And the average is a dollar thirty-six per meal. Through June fourteenth, we served a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four meals in the jail. And you see the breakdown, the salary and benefits and the food costs divided by the meals, that's where we get that, so... That's the first page. The second page is basically just information. You have through the first six months of this year, how many people are booked into the jail? How many people are released? And then the average number of inmates we have per month. I thought that was good information for you to have. Some of you ask me that from time to time. The bottom of that page is a six-month pension update. So through June twenty-fourth, we were up eight-point-two-eight percent this year. And I believe it's the first time our pension balance has ever crested twenty million. So on that date, we were at twenty million, one eighty-five, seven sixty-eight. So I just wanted to give you a six-month pension update. Third page. This is a jail. It's a pay study, basically is what it is, with a staffing analysis built into it. And this is from Adams County. They sent us this document this year when we were conducting our own pay study and it's something that they did. So I just wanted you guys to share this with you because the majority of the work that we did for our salary comparisons and our pay study was done on the merit deputy side and not a lot of it was done on the correction side. So everything on this page deals with corrections. And Delaware County was included in the Adams County pay study. So I give this to you for you to look at and read and digest on your own time. It's pretty fascinating how in-depth they went. It also talks about what it takes to house federal inmates, which, you know, we've all talked about at great length in our discussions. So I just give you that for your information, for food for thought. And then the last page, I expect most of you have seen, this is just the results of our pay study again. I just wanted to pass it out because I think there's a few of you that didn't actually get that. This is the snapshot of, you know, of our months-long pay study. So that is, that is the information that I wanted to give to you. I also want to make a comment and to thank you and to clear up maybe some misinformation that's in the public. So I have met with every single county council member, either on a one-on-one basis or in a small group situation. I've met with some of the county council members up to three different times. The county council has been very friendly, very willing to go out of their way to meet with me. They've... They've, they've received all the information that we've given them from the, from the pay study. They've asked a lot of questions. Without putting words in their mouth, they realize something needs to be done. We just have to figure out what something is. So if there's any misinformation floating around the community or around the internet, God knows there's a lot of misinformation on the internet. But I want to clarify that, that the county council has worked with us diligently since I think our first meeting was March, March 4th, the first time I started meeting with So I wanted to clarify that. At this point, nothing, nothing has happened. We don't have any guarantees on what's going to happen. We continue to work. So I wanted to thank you all for taking the times, the time out of your schedules to meet with me. I also want to thank Ryan Webb, who went up and worked a partial shift in the jail last week. I still encourage the remaining six of you to go up and work a three or four hour shift in the middle of the day, late morning, to see what our corrections officers go through on a daily basis. Go down, serve meals with them, you know, get inmates ready for court or whatever. So I encourage you to, I strongly encourage you to do that before budget time. I really want you to know what these guys and gals go through on a daily basis before you go through another budget process. It's really that important for me, that you know what it is they do. So I think that's all I have with that. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Well, just throw out there for those folks who don't know, we do start our budget process the first week of September. We have our budget hearings, and it's three days of going through our budget line by line by line. And then throughout the month of September, we as a team work to try to get to the point where we have a budget we can approve in October, so, or sometimes September, it depends on, on this, on the year. But that does start in September.
It'll be October this year. We've got it set, don't we Donna?
We do, we have a date set. We do.
October 12.
Is when we'll finalize the budget.
So, so I also want to thank, I mean, obviously, there's a big crowd today, a lot of corrections officers and merit deputies, along with their families. There are people here who aren't related to anybody on our department, they just took time out of their day to come and support us. So I want to thank everybody who showed up for the, for the support rally. It means a lot to me, I appreciate it.
Well, on that, you guys, there is a lot of support for, for you in Delaware County, and there's a lot of support for you guys here up, up on council. I don't think there's anybody up here that doesn't agree that we need to, we need to find a way to, to get increased, you know, get an increase. So, that's what we'll be working towards. We'll continue to meet. We haven't turned down a, a meeting with the sheriff and won't. You know, the discussion still continues. The ask is a big ask.
Sure.
So, so it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough budget year. We've got asks from all, all of the other different departments, and it's going to require a lot of work on council's part and on the department heads and, but there, we know there's a lot of support for the Delaware County Sheriff's Department because, and the jail, because of how professional you guys conduct yourselves. I do, you know, again, would caution you on the social media stuff. Sometimes that gets out of control, and it doesn't do you guys any good. You know, from what we see, it, it does just the opposite a lot of times on social media. So just be careful what's, what's going on, on there. I do appreciate especially the handwritten and typed-out letters that we've been receiving that, that tell us about you, from the ones that we've, we've received, tell us about you, how you got into the, the Sheriff's Department or the jail and, and what you've done since then. Those are, those are enjoyable to read. But, you know, keep, keep them clean and you'll, and you'll keep our continued support, so.
I wanted to thank you sheriff for giving me the opportunity to come up there.
Yeah.
It was an invaluable learning experience, four hours up there, and it, it's a complete paradigm shift. It's something you think you understand, you go in there and you see it, and you hear the concerns. The employees shared some of their concerns with me, and everybody was very respectful. And it was a really good way to, to see the challenges from a different perspective. I know everybody's busy. If anyone can, can find time to schedule that, it's really invaluable learning experience. Like Scott said, appreciate everybody coming, and from my perspective, I've, I've been pretty vocal as well, but I just want to remind everybody to just remain patient, that, like Jessica said, really, the September, and this will be my first time going through that experience, will be pretty much the first opportunity to really address it. So everybody just remain patient and we'll work through it.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you Tony.
Any other department elected officials? Any new business?
I wanted to talk to you about something. Have you considered the council possibly contracting with a, some kind of actuarial firm? I've talked to you individually and talked to Mr. Hughes about it. I didn't just bring these files with me today because I was going to need them all, but this right in here is all the pension on the Sheriff's Department, that right there. This is today's work that I've accumulated over the last few years. I still have a real strong concern about, I know the sheriff said the pension plan's in better shape than it's been in a long time, but it's still serving higher salaries and more people. And I have a real concern that the things we do to increase salaries may affect this pension plan and put it back where it was a few years ago, where it was actually, while I've served on this council, it was actually defunct. We saved it, but the actuaries told us that it was not going to continue on. And, and if it doesn't stay funded, it won't continue on. That's the way it has been set up. I'll leave here at the end of my term without a resolution of this, and I still think as a council member and a person that has owned several businesses, that numbers do mean something, and they mean something in the future. If you don't get good perspective on what it's going to cost in the future, the next generation will suffer. And I, I almost witnessed that right here, when the actuaries told us in a meeting right in this room, that we would probably never have to contribute more than $30,000 a year to the sheriff's pension fund. And I've got it, I've got the minutes to prove that that happened. And at that time, we hit the circuit breaker, we had to lay people off, we had to cut back to four days. As you heard today, the maintenance people are still on part-time, took them off of full-time. We did a lot of things to, to get this budget back in order, and these folks here, along with their predecessors, worked on this for a good 10 or 12 years. And our current sheriff is a dedicated lawman, public servant, and as you heard today, we want to work with you, but we don't want to totally annihilate your program. And we need help, I do. I honestly do not have the capabilities to do the math that it'll take to tell us exactly what will happen in the future based on the numbers. And if, if the criminal rate gets greater and you need more people, and that just adds more to the problem every time you add another person. So, I, I think, I made myself a note. Do we need to hire someone to represent council, to advise on how to address council's responsibility and how to provide on the suggested plan? And I'm talking about the sheriff's suggested plan. I, I've read your plan sheriff, I personally don't have the capability to, how, how to make that work, the information you gave us. Some of the stuff in your plan is based on contracts that the commissioners would create with other counties and other, the feds to put inmates in your jail. I, I've heard one county has already withdrawn. Not to say that's a negative, but I've lived my life as an adult trying to turn negatives into positives. That's one of my mottos. And we need to turn this negative into a positive without creating a bigger negative. And that's my bottom line, thank you.
Well, to answer your question Ron, I did talk to Bill about that since, I think, last meeting, and, and we have got a, a request out to Baker Tilly. We haven't, I don't think we've heard anything back on anything definitive, and I think we probably need to work on the scope of that a little bit more.
I've got a telephone conference at 11 o'clock with Steve Minor from Baker Tilly, and to see what they would propose in terms of providing us with information and support. And we, before we do anything, obviously, that'll come back before the council.
And I would like to also have a, a pre-budget meeting, a special meeting, towards, I guess, the second week of next month, if that gives Donna enough time to hopefully get some, some figures, and hopefully we'll have some anticipated incomes from the state and, and things like that, that we can, we can take a look at, so.
I could tell you, I've got, I finally got highway yesterday. Jessica said the city's got theirs, I don't know how they got theirs, because it's not even open yet for, as far as lit taxes, I'm still waiting. I don't know how the city got theirs, because they're under the same thing our phone's on, so how they got theirs, I don't know, because it's not even available yet. So, I'm still waiting on that.
Okay. I think we're looking at, what was the date, Thursday?
12.
Thursday the 12th at 1 o'clock. Jenny, is the room available? Do you know Thursday the 12th at 1 o'clock?
Next Thursday the 12th?
Yeah. No, not next Thursday, the 12th, two weeks.
Thursday, August 12th.
It should be, yeah.
1 o'clock.
Because the only thing that takes place on Thursday, yeah.
Okay.
It'll be open.
And we will just, we'll just update council on what we have at that time, the best newest information that we have. I think we have budget books available, are they here today? Okay, that we can give you guys to, to get a glimpse at where we're at. There were some big requests from, and I haven't seen the budget book yet, but there's some big requests, I think, that came in from different, different budgets that we'll have to work through.
Scott, if you don't mind, while all these people are here, I want to take a minute to thank Charlie Walker for all of his years of service here with the county. He'll be leaving next Friday, and I've tried everything I can do to get him to stay. I've left notes on his desk and everything. But he's leaving.
Charlie, you want to get up and say a few words? I didn't think, I didn't think so, but.
Hear what I gotta say.
Next Friday from, next Friday from 11 to 1, we're going to have a little going-away party for him out on the plaza.
Okay.
So if everybody would stop by.
Will there be food involved there? I'm thinking that there will, huh? You're not in charge of it?
Yeah.
I said, you're not in charge of the party?
No.
Well, thanks, thanks for your service. We appreciate it.
Also, for those of you who attended the county council meeting, I contacted the state yesterday and asked where your letters were. I think I threw them for loop, because I said, when am I going to get them? I've got people that would like to be reimbursed, and.
Yeah, right.
Her first response was, well, that's with the AIC, and I responded and said, no, I get, the letters is a directive from the state examiner. So then she emailed me back and said, oh, that was her mistake, she would try to get them out just as soon as possible.
Thank you.
So, I know you've been worried about it, but till I get that letter, which actually states you went to school this day, and I can pay it from unappropriated, that's what I'm waiting on. So.
Okay. Are they going to send those directly to you or to us, or?
Usually email them to you guys.
Okay.
So if I haven't heard anything in a week or two, I'm going to ask them, so.
Okay. I don't think we have any new, new business.
We have one, one thing, so.
Yep, we can.
So Ron had made a comment about the circuit breaker, and I know we have more of a public audience now that we're on Facebook, and we've got more folks here, so whenever we refer to the circuit breaker, we're talking about the, the tax caps that happened in '08, which I, from what I've read, looked like it really hit the county around 2011. Those, those caps really hit our budgets hard. So whenever you hear us talking about the circuit breaker, as much as we all love that property tax cap, that does, that is how it impacts your local county budget, so.
And you guys will, you'll review those in your August meeting, so. And I can tell you, it went up. Can't tell you how much off the top of my head, but projections that did go up, so.
What was the date on that special meeting, the 12th?
August 12th, Thursday the 12th.
Yeah, 1 o'clock. Okay, we have no new business that I'm aware of. Public comment, is there anybody that would like to make?
Anyone sign up?
You just sign in and state your name and your department.
Before, before we get started Scott, I want to introduce Tanya Dunsmore.
Oh, yep, that's right, yeah.
She's going to be training in Donna's job. Donna's been training her, and.
Great.
She's been in the treasures office about 20 years, maybe a little bit longer than that. She's our head bookkeeper, so she moved over to our office.
You're welcome.
Yeah, she was at the finance meeting and soaking it all in there, so I saw her out front and meant to say something. Thanks for saying something Steve.
Steve wasn't there, so we didn't scare her off.
Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
Andrew Pop, Muncie resident. Hey, I want to appreciate the county's efforts. I've reached out to several, we had a bunch of great conversations, Mr. Ballard, Ms. Piper. Spoke to you individually about, about the concerns with the Sheriff's Department and the jail, 911 call center. Really appreciate your guys' feedback. I appreciate Sheriff Skinner and his efforts and trying to move this, this football forward. It's, it's a big issue, and it's a big ask. I have some concerns, I have some, some worries, and a couple of questions with that, too. Your guys' budget meetings, are those open to the public?
They are.
Yes.
Okay, and are they, I, I work weird hours right now, are you guys, are they going to be on Facebook?
No. So the first day, we meet from typically, what, 8:30 a.m. to about 8:30 p.m. We break for lunch and sometimes dinner, depending.
Depending how long, sure.
Yeah, they go all day. We get a schedule, and each department has a time slot that they try to come in, and we try to stay on target.
Sure.
With that, but it's literally like a 12-hour day, and then the next day, it's, next couple days are about eight-hour days, typical business hours.
Okay, so I can make most of those, that's great. Alright, so the follow-up question I have is, some things that came up in speaking with Mr. Ballard, Ms. Piper. Every department has big asks. It was said again here today, you know, there's a bunch of big budgetary concerns. I just, in my opinion, there's an importance to Sheriff's Department, and there's an importance to, to a correctional officer in a jail, that might be a little different. So when we're looking at raises in areas, I know everybody wants a raise, I want a raise every year at my job, I'm sure you guys all would love raises every year at your jobs. I just think we need to prioritize where that money's going to, and realize that everybody has an important role to play, but these guys are up at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, answering 911 calls for people who are, could be in today's, could be a family emergency, could be a tragedy. These guys are working holidays, these guys are, right now, they're in a position where you've got people who can't get time off because they're so short-staffed. I really hope we just take it at the heart and look at all possible options. You know, you guys are paid to make unpopular decisions to find solutions, so I hope that we address all possible options to get the best result here for the Sheriff's Department, for the pension, and for the county at whole. Thank you guys.
Can I add something to your statement, though?
Absolutely.
Let's not forget about dispatch being a priority as well within that issue.
Ryan, I, I agree, I just, and I wasn't going to say this, you and I had this conversation, I think that there's separate issues at dispatch than you have at the Sheriff's Department. I watched the 911 board meetings, I discussed those with you. I don't think we've ever seen anybody from the Sheriff's Department, from a leadership standpoint, whether it be the sheriff, chief deputy, his captains, his lieutenants, his jail commander, et cetera, have any issues called into concern as far as leadership and how they're operating. I think that while yes, the pay is an issue, and the hiring is an issue there, it appears, based on what I've hiring is an issue there, it appears, based on what I've seen at the nine-one-one meetings and discussing with people, it appears that there's some leadership issues there that I think could address a lot of issues there as well as the pay. Whereas with the Sheriff's Department and the jail, I worked at the jail. Everybody here, I think, knows that. The best boss I've ever had is Captain Kurt Walthour. And obviously, Sheriff Skinner's the, the boss there. But as far as the jail goes, Captain Walthour runs it. He's the best boss I've ever had. So while, yes, there's obvious issues with the nine-one-one call center as far as pay and staffing, the Sheriff's Department leadership has never been called into question since Sheriff Skinner came into office. That's not the case at the nine-one-one center. So you're right, but let's, let's address all concerns there. Because the Sheriff's Department has a singular. It appears to be multiple issues at nine-one-one, so.
And like, is it?
I mean, there's a manpower issue there.
Sure, absolutely.
We can't forget about.
Well, I, I agree there's a manpower issue. Ryan, I, I don't want to, I don't want to come up here and, and discuss that because I, I'm not here to attack people, and that's, that's your guys' and the commissioners' area. That's not mine.
Let's cut it off right there.
Appreciate it.
We've let you go beyond, but
I appreciate it. Thank you, Scott.
You bet.
I could address, you, you can go ahead, Sam. I'll just address it. One of the things that Mr. Pop had said, it kind of jogged a memory, that a story I heard when I worked at the jail the other night. One of the corporals, a young lady, the ladies are at a disadvantage as far as the males. There's far fewer ladies that work there than males. And she shared a concern that it kind of separates the difference of, they're a different type of county employee than, say, someone in the assessor's office. She, she told me she can't get off for her wedding, her wedding that she's paid for a year in advance and honeymoon. She can't get it off. They don't have the manpower, and there's only a couple other girls that can cover her. That really resonated with me. That's, that's a challenge that we're not going to find in most offices throughout the county. Usually the, okay, well, you know, someone works it, or if you just missed that week, you know, we'll see you next week. So I recognize those challenges, and I do understand the difference. So I just want you to be aware that I, I see it that way.
All right. Anybody else?
Troy.
Troy, how's everybody doing? Muncie City Council. I'm also a Muncie resident. I just wanted to voice my support for the Delaware County Sheriff's Department. I know that they do a great job. They have a very important role in the county, and they assist the Muncie Police Department. As a lot of you know, Muncie has went through the same kind of issues as far as being a training ground for, for the debt, or for the officers that we, we bring in. Several years later, they go off to someplace that's going to pay more money and, and be a little more nicer place. The city's been working hard to try and correct that, and I think we've made a lot of headway in doing that. And we're going to continue to work hard at that. I wanted to encourage the county council and the county commissioners to take the art funds that you have and use them creatively in order to alleviate some of the budget issues that you have, that you can use that, that money for, in order to free up some of that money, to give these deputies the raises that they deserve. I think it's very important that, that you look at all the corners to find ways in order to make sure that they are taken care of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, to address what Troy said, I think everybody needs to be aware that we're not in control of where the money is spent. The commissioners pass an ordinance, giving them control of how to spend the money. We could just vote yes or no of how to allocate it.
One of the things I want to share, too, it's, you know, a common misconception that the county's so large that we have more money than the city. And actually, that's just the opposite. The city brings in more tax revenue. The city received more of their American Rescue Plan money as well. So while we do cover more actual ground surface, square mileage, we do bring in fewer dollars. So we do have a lot of work in front of us. But we've all been working together, and we'll do that during budget season and continue to do that to, to try to alleviate the pain points. So, thank you, Troy.
Anybody else? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Ballard, second, from Piper. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you all.